Thomas.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Boltinghouse.
Here.
Loudon.
Here.
Reherd.
Here.
Kring.
Here.
Schmid.
Here.
Carpenter Davis.
Here.
Josie.
All right, thank you. We will move into our public hearings. We do not have any public hearings this evening, so we will move into our special presentations. We do have three special presentations this evening. The first is an update from the Sustainability Commission Chairperson, Lauren Ryder Schmidt.
He's taller than he was using this before. Okay, well, first off, thank you so much to the council and the staff for hosting us today, and a special thanks for being flexible with the scheduling. I was definitely supposed to attend earlier this month and couldn't do the illness, so I definitely appreciate that flexibility, and I'm excited to talk to you guys today. So we have come before councils since 2017 to provide an update on the Sustainability Commission's activities, and we really appreciate this opportunity to be able to come before you, kind of talk through where we've been and where we're going, and get a chance to talk to you about maybe where you'd like to see us go. So we are here to talk about a little bit of our new goals. So, is there a... Do I give you the signal? Ooh, there's animations on it. So, in December, we held a biannual retreat at City Hall to reassess and refresh our goals. So you see a few pictures of us here. We reviewed what we do well, and we reviewed what we'd like to do to improve. So you can kind of see some from some of the photos. It's a little small for your view, but we came up with a whole whiteboard with the things that we do well and we'd like to improve. So with that, we came up with some updated goals. So go ahead and take a look at those. I think in your packet, you may see the goals from prior. I didn't want to waste your time going through those, but I wanted to kind of put a finer point on where we're going in the future. So the most important one is that we would like to partner with the council, the staff, and the city boards and commissions to center sustainability and achieve the goals of the Climate Action Task Force. What you're gonna see through a lot of this is a renewed sense of urgency. The Climate Task Force has done a lot of good work, and they've set some really ambitious goals, which we'll talk about in a minute. But we want to help provide support and accountability for those goals. So you'll also see that we've highlighted that we want to monitor, measure, and track climate and sustainability-related initiatives. The next goal is that we want to tirelessly advocate to the council and staff for adoption of sustainability best practices in all city operations and upcoming development projects within the city. We also want to increase awareness of the importance and benefits the sustainability measures bring to planet, people, and prosperity. Those are those three key P's of sustainability, and I think the more we can center things around how these benefit people, not just do it because you feel good. There are real benefits to sustainability, and we really want to bring awareness to that, especially when there's public spend invested in these things. Similarly, in the next one, we want to engage with residents and businesses alike to influence their behavior toward adopting sustainable best practices in their daily lives. We also want to retain a foundation of expertise to maintain mission as a thought leader in sustainability. We're really fortunate on the Sustainability Commission that we have a lot of very, very strong professionals on our commission, and we've actually had a little bit of change. We've had a longstanding member, Andy Highland, who's been on the commission for many, many years and was a professional communicator, really helped us shape, among many others on the commission, who left the community. We also have had some turnover with the staff. We're super excited to have Justin. But we recognize that this is a really important moment amongst the commission, and we don't want to rest on our laurels. We're very fortunate to be seen as a thought leader, and we don't want to lose that. So we wanted to recognize that we want to recommit to staying up on the things that are always changing. So, let's talk a little bit about what we did in 2023. So, number one, we participated with the Climate Action and Bike Pedestrian Task Forces. We have members from our commission, some of which are here today, that have served on these task forces, and we are so proud to say that Mission has been setting really, really aggressive goals and trying to be a leader amongst the region. They want to reach net zero by emissions in government operations by 2025, and then for energy generation in homes and buildings by 2035. So first off, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the council and the staff for supporting these goals. These are really important to us as a community, and we are really, really thankful to live in a community that also supports those. There's a lot of urgency around this, and we really, really appreciate that. We did host a successful Go Green 2023 Environmental Fair. It was our second one. There were nine cities that were involved, 42 booths, five educational sessions, and a thrift store fashion show with models from ages three to 83. So definitely big thanks to Terry and her committee for doing that, and we're very excited to say that we'll be doing that again in 2024, and hopefully it'll be bigger and better than ever. We also continued work on our scorecard, our sustainability scorecard, which you're familiar with from your packets. We did three different ones last year, and we look forward to doing more. We really love that opportunity and appreciate the time to be able to help shape conversations around sustainable building. We also encouraged citizen awareness regarding effective ways to improve energy efficiency through the Energy Audit Program, and this is one that I was very excited about. I can... Kudos to Emily Randall, who helped kind of brainstorm a lot of this, but we were very excited to help provide support. We actually had a few commissioners who were able to participate in it. We're very excited in 2024 to work with Justin and the rest of the staff to continue the momentum on that, because I think it was really enlightening. I know for me personally, I didn't know very much about energy audits, and so it was very cool to be able to be a part of that. And we're excited to share that out with the community. Moving on to the next slide. Our recycling programs. We already have two programs in place for battery recycling and holiday lights recycling, and just in 2023 alone, we recycled almost an additional one ton of products. And over the lifecycle of the product, we've done almost... Or the programs, rather, we've done almost five tons, which is like insane, especially knowing that some of our landfills are starting to fill up. So very, very, very proud of that program and for the commission, who sometimes donates time to help sort those batteries. I am continuously shocked by the many, many batteries that our community is able to turn out. We continue to volunteer at city events, trying to educate residents about recycling best practices. We're actually going to be excited to partner with our friends in PRT and volunteer at the Bunny Extravaganza here in a few weeks. We've been able to maintain the communities for all ages gold level designation, which is very important. And apologies for the red on the screen, formatting error on my part, but supporting that goal number five, we definitely are taking seriously those continued education efforts. And I also want to thank the city and staff for helping sponsor the Climate Action KC Summit. You can see in the photo there, we had quite the delegation amongst staff and commissioners who attended that. The event was phenomenal the last year. There were so many great breakout sessions, and I know for me personally, who doesn't work in this space day to day, it was very enlightening, especially knowing how much federal money is available now due to the infrastructure bills. So, so excited to be able to have that opportunity and excited to do that in the future. Also, I want to call out the effort specifically of Josh Thiede, who's here tonight, who did take some time to re-review our scorecard to see if any updates were needed in light of the updated building codes that were being adopted in the city. At the end of the day, the scorecard is trying to make sure that you're going above and beyond what the building codes are, so it's definitely important that we stay up with those. So thank you, Josh, for spending time on that. And again, continued service through volunteering. We have adopted a street. We have dropped a section of the street on John Mission Parkway. We tabled the Mission Market, and we definitely do want to renew our efforts to get out in the community and spread the good word. So, plans for 2024. So again, if you saw our goals previously, you see that our goals aren't necessarily significantly different from our prior goals, but there is a renewed sense of urgency. I do want to call out that we really did feel empowered to do so by the aggressive goals set forth by the Climate Action Task Force. We definitely want to do more of the same. We want to keep doing our recycling efforts. We want to keep doing the fair. We get such great community output there. We get great input and great engagement. We want to keep shouting from the rooftops these successes with the public. We definitely want to highlight more with the energy audits. We're also looking... It's probably too early to talk about specifics, but we're looking for opportunities to share out and collaborate with the PRT Commission, particularly in relation to amplifying things around the Adopt a Tree Program, the tree donation program. We always set aside some money in our budget every year to plant a tree, and we kind of realized, hmm, can we do more to inspire others to help plant trees as well? So we're in the early stages of talking about ways we can do that. And just generally speaking, like I said, we're really, really proud of the success the commission has brought so far. Really proud of the group that we have. We have a lot of very, very great talent. We have folks from Mid-America Regional Council, formerly of Rippleglass. We have folks who work in project management. We have folks that work for Water One. We have folks that work in engineering. We have a business community member. We have a really, 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 really strong commission, and we're just so proud to have them there and be seen as a thought leader amongst the community. So we definitely think the future is bright. There's definitely some urgency around our goals, but we do really, 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 really want to thank you all for your support. We couldn't do any of it without such great support from the council and from the staff. Sustainability is really growing in importance. I think as we are lucky to agree here, we're seeing the impacts, and we just really, really appreciate that the city is rising to meet the moment. So, I was going to open it up for questions, but before I do, I have a question of my own, and I just wanted to ask the council if there's anything that you want us to focus on. We work for you. So is there anything that you want us to focus on or be thinking about in our mission moving forward? Yes?
I've already talked to Josh about this. I'd like you to start working on or looking at this overall stormwater effect with pervious parking at all these developments we've got. Stormwater is a big issue, and you see the impact immediately and long term. So I would love for you to look at possibly, you know, coming up with language, anything over two stories in height that has parking associated with it, that we would look at the pervious element on our development plans.
Great. Thank you, Debbie.
What a great presentation. Thank you so much. That was wonderful. I think something that the council could really benefit from, and this is definitely a, you know, Josh will be like, I'm ready to do that right now. But I think, you know, as we've gotten into the tax abatement policy, we've struggled a little bit, I think, with our own education and understanding around green buildings and the certification process of those. And I think helping the council better understand the connection point between the scorecard, the process of the scorecarding, and I know it's a little gray in terms of like where that falls in maybe an incentive conversation, and that's more of a staff thing, but both the scorecard piece and then, you know, what is LEED, what is Green Globes, and how should we consider the ranking and value of those as we consider tax abatements? I know that's a little wonky and detailed, Lauren, so I apologize, but I think that's something that I think everyone here would agree with needing a little help on.
Sure. No, that's totally fair. Thank you. Who else? Hi. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Just a comment. I know I'm one of the liaisons, and I'm looking forward to the onboarding, and I'll be excited to dive in more with you at that time and talk more about the vision and all the exciting things we could look at.
For sure. Very excited to have both Trent and Leah joining us. Hopefully we'll have our... Finally have our long-awaited orientation here in a week or so. Again, another thing they were flexible about with my illness, so thank you both, and welcome.
Did you want to have the commission wave their hands?
I will. Yes, I do have a few commissioners joining me today, so if you would like to stand or wave and be recognized for your contributions, we seriously have such an amazing group. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say something real quick. I went to the conference that we had with Climate Action KC Summit, that's what it was. And I just wanted to say one of my coworkers from completely outside of the city attended as well and was just like, so is Mission the ones putting this on? Because there was so much representation and leadership from the city of Mission, and it really showed. So yay for us.
Yeah, very cool. I know. And there was a big turnout when Mayor Flora had her awards as well. She did such a great job. So it was just an awesome event all around. Super excited for next year. The only other thing I will call out, and then I swear you can move on with the agenda. I just wanted to say thank you to Justin and welcome. We're excited to have you as our staff liaison, and thank you for your help in getting this set up for today, even though we hadn't met yet. So thank you and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you for sustainability, commission members too, and the audience who came.
All right, our next presentation this evening is a proclamation recognizing the Seven Days Make a Ripple Change the World Program with John Pretzman. Seven Days Overcomes Hate by Promoting Kindness and Understanding Through Education and Dialogue. This year, Seven Days marks its 10th anniversary of promoting kindness with a new community kindness festival to be held on Sunday, April 14. You can find opportunities on how to participate by visiting the website at www seven days.org. Together, we can make a ripple of kindness to change the world. I am pleased to recognize, or I am pleased to welcome John Pretzman to accept our Seven Days Supportive City Proclamation. Thanks to you and all the members of your organization for all the work you are doing to promote kindness.
Thank you. I appreciate the support of City of Mission. The 10-year anniversary has both excitement and sadness, if you will, built right into it. For those of us who remember 10 years ago what happened at the Jewish Community Center, so that's what we're celebrating. But obviously, we have a lot of work to do still on the kindness category, because we obviously see hate throughout our communities, not just obviously here in Mission, but throughout, and that's what we're working on. We're focused on the youth, that high school youth where it's like they formed some opinions but haven't gotten to the point where maybe they're not open to different thoughts in education and dialogue about differences being okay versus I'm on this side, I'm on this side, if you will. So we're trying to really promote that and lean into some tougher discussions that we're having in that. So we appreciate the support, and as you said, the festival's on the 14th at the Jewish Community Center, and we'd love to have all the families out there. We're gonna have Kate Constantino, who was on The Voice, who's from Boo Valley, and James Winchester from the Chiefs, who says he's bringing a special guest. If you don't know what that means, we'll have to tune in to find out what that means, but appreciate the support of the city. Thank you.
At Robyn's request. Can't let her down while she's in.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. And then our final special presentation this evening is a proclamation which recognizes Fair Housing Month in the city of Mission. This April marks 57 years since the signing of the Federal Fair Housing Act, and it is important that we recognize and raise awareness of each individual's rights under fair housing. We are committed to equal housing opportunities in our community, and I am honored to proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Mission. All right, and with that, we will move into the issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any issuance of notes and bonds this evening. So therefore, we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has six items tonight. Our council committees met on March 6 and fully discussed each one of these items, and the committees agreed that these items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. However, if any council member or a member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may entertain that. They may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Council President, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed items 4A through 4F.
Second.
All right. I've heard a motion and a second. Justin, please call the roll. Or is there any discussion on council? Sign none. Justin, please call the roll.
Loudon.
Aye.
Schmid.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Reherd.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we will now move into item five, public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items not included on our agenda this evening, now would be the time. And if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature, and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also, please be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that might have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Are there any public comments at this time? Anything online, Justin? No. Okay. All right, we will now move into our action items. Planning Commission, we do not have any items coming forward from our Planning Commission this evening. Therefore, we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Reherd, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Council President Boltinghouse. The Finance and Administration Committee met on March 6 and considered three items. The meeting minutes and declaration of surplus equipment were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. The Mission Bowl Apartments LLC funding agreement will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. The Sunflower Development Group is interested in doing a second phase of their multifamily project currently under construction on the former Mission Bowl property located at 5399 Martway Street. Last summer, Sunflower submitted a preliminary development plan to construct a second 96-unit mixed-use structure on property to the east of Phase 1. The PDP was approved by the Planning Commission in July 2023 and by city council in August 2023. Sunflower has indicated a desire to seek tax increment financing, or TIF, incentives similar to those granted for their Phase 1 project, the Lanes at Mission Bowl. They intend to submit a TIF application as well as an IRB application for the sales tax exemption associated with the purchase of construction materials. The developer has communicated to staff that for Phase 2, they would plan to dedicate 20% of the units as attainable housing and would secure LEED Silver Certification for the project. Mission historically requires a funding agreement to be in place before city or staff consultants spend time and resources reviewing the applications or engaging in negotiations. This agreement recognizes Mission Bowl Apartments LLC as the exclusive developer of the project and requires them to provide an initial escrow of $10,000 to cover the city's costs in reviewing their applications. The escrow must be replenished if the cost exceeds $10,000. The funding agreement does not obligate the city to approve any incentives for the project. It is the first step in the evaluation process, ensuring that Mission residents do not bear any costs associated with consideration of the incentive request. It is anticipated the review and discussion with required hearings and public notice would occur between late March and June 2024. Council President, I move the city council approve the funding agreement with Mission Bowl Apartments LLC for review and consideration of Phase 2 of the Lanes at Mission Bowl project.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on council? Yes, still.
Do we have representatives here from there?
Mr. Floodman is online, so he's available for questions.
I've gone through everything, and for the last several months, we've gone back and forth kind of between Mission Bowl LLC and Residence on Rock Creek, and now I'm being told there may be a third name. It's getting really confusing, and for the public at large, it's confusing for me. I think they're trying to follow along. It's really difficult. Could we get a clarification on what the formal legal name of this development is?
Well, let me interject before Mr. Floodman answers, because it will remain confusing, because typically what happens is in a development, an LLC will be formed for each project, and that occurred. So there's a different LLC, for example, for the locale project that I think has no tie. If you... Mission Trails or something like that. So there's often no connection there. I think going forward, I think it's a good point, and so this is another LLC that has been formed for Phase 2, which is separate from Phase 1, and they have gone through... So the LLC for Phase 1 had one name, which was different than the first name given to the project, which was the Residence on Rock Creek. It is now the name of that development, as it's leased and advertised to the public, is the Lanes at Mission Bowl. And so Mr. Floodman can probably speak to if they have identified the name for Phase 2 or if they're continuing that. But I think for ease in communicating with the public, I think our references should probably just be to Sunflower Development Group, just sort of the overarching umbrella, but that may not be the name that appears on some of the legal documents as we move through this process.
There's four names.
Yes, there are. And Banks, I don't know if you have anything else.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and I apologize for the confusion. So Mission Bowl Apartments LLC was the buyer of the ground initially with Phase 1. That will remain the same buyer on Phase 2. We then, when we raised our equity, they come in as a partner, which at that point in time, the LLC became Residence on Rock Creek LLC. Obviously, we have interior designers, marketing experts, et cetera, that are much better at branding than I am. That informed me that Residence on Rock Creek, they didn't feel was the appropriate name for this site and this location. So I was outvoted, and the Lanes at Mission Bowl will be this project. Mission Bowl will drop off. It will become known as the Lanes. The same with Phase 2. It will have the exact same name. So that will eliminate, hopefully, some of the confusion. It will be the Lanes. I understand the confusion. Again, I like Residence on Rock Creek, but I got outvoted. I do like the Lanes a lot. I think that does a good job of maybe a little bit more bringing the history of the site to the forefront, which I think was really important for our kind of a branding and marketing experts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Banks. Any other comments or questions from council? Yes, Carol.
Is the project Phase 1 on time and meeting the deadlines?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, Lauren. Yes, it is. I have, you know, the sidewalk on the north side has been open. That was a key point for us by March 1. I have weekly, we have an OAC meeting, which is just owner architects and contractors every couple of weeks, and then on the off week, I have a meeting with both our property management and our GC. In that meeting, we discuss numerous things. Opening timeline, VIP leases being currently executed, or what events are happening in order to get us to TCO, CFO, and what conversations are taking place. Currently, we are staying on track. We anticipate, you know, I would say at this point in time, probably a late June opening. We have over 125 people on the VIP waitlist, which means people that have reached out to our management team with interest in the area. Are we going to sign every one of those? Probably not, but usually anywhere from 25 to 35% would be a successful VIP waitlist. But we continue to have those meetings every couple of weeks to ensure that the timeline and the communication between our management and potential residents is in line, and currently at this point in time, it is. I know that sometimes you may look at vehicles on the site and not seem like there's as much activity, but that doesn't always indicate how many people are inside the building doing work, et cetera. So we had the conversation literally this morning with our GC, and they continue to feel comfortable with the deadline that we've given them.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions at this time?
I would just reiterate that you see on any development project, you see this beehive activity on the exterior, and then when they move inside for all the finished work, it can look like it's, you know, slowed down. But I know that we have council and staff and residents in our community who are anxious to see it move to completion, but it is absolutely moving forward.
All right. Mr. Carroll, will you please? All right, Mr. Carroll, will you please call the roll?
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Reherd.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kring.
Aye.
Schmid.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilmember Reherd, for your report. Does that conclude?
That concludes it. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. We will now move to Councilmember Loudon. Will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Absolutely. The Community Development Committee also met on March 6th and considered seven items. The meeting minutes, MFACT deck chair replacement, MFACT one meter diving board, 2024 street preservation construction projects inspection award, and Public Works capital equipment purchase were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. Johnson Drive landscaping bids and 2024 street preservation construction projects award for 50th Street, 55th Street will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Seven, Johnson Drive landscaping bids. The landscape on Johnson Drive between Lamar Avenue and Maple Street was completed in two, in, in 2014. Over the past 10 years, the area has experienced issues related to overgrowth, creating site distance problems and presenting ongoing maintenance challenges. In response to concerns raised by business owners and to address the deteriorating conditions of the landscape, the city decided to evaluate and renovate the corridor with new landscape designs incorporating native plantings. The renovation project includes the removal of existing plants and replacing them with native, native plantings and six months of maintenance once the project is accepted as complete. The goal is to create a visually appealing, a sustainable landscape that supports mission climate action goals. Native plants require less water and maintenance, provide habitat for pollinators, food for birds, and sink carbon into the ground with their deep roots. The project was bid in January and three bids were received, with Country Brook Landscapers submitting the lowest and most responsive bid. Council President, I move the City Council approve a contract with Country Brook Landscapers for renovation of the Johnson Drive Landscape Renovation Project in an amount not to exceed $1,079,876.65.
Second.
Right, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say I'm glad to know that we're doing some native plantings. I think it's important for all of the things I just said.
Yeah, I agree. And when you think about, you know, back to our work session tonight, plus this, plus, you know, things like the e-bikes we're doing with Rowland Park, you can kind of see where all these pieces are really starting to fit together and create a really desirable outcome for the city, so. All right, with no further discussion, Mr. Carroll, please call the roll.
Reherd.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Schmid.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Thomas. Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
2024 street preservation construction projects award. The 2024 residential street preservation project includes 55th Street from Lamar East to the city limits. This location was selected from the proposed 10-year program for maintenance and rehabilitation of local residential streets based on pavement condition. The average PCI of this segment is 40, which is considered very poor. The scope of work for the project includes full-depth pavement reconstruction and curb and gutter removal and replacement, existing sidewalk replacement and stormwater improvements or repairs. The bid, the project was bid in January with five contractors submitting bids. GB Construction LLC has submitted the lowest and most responsive bid. The project came in at $300,000 under the engineer's estimate. Construction is anticipated to begin in April, May of 2024 and is estimated to be completed in 244 calendar days. Utility relocation work has been underway for the last several months in anticipation for this project. I move the City Council approve a contract with GB Construction LLC for construction of the 2024 residential street preservation project in an amount not to exceed $1,788,274.75.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from council on the second? Yes, Councilmember Parker.
Thanks. Even though it's not my ward, this is a street that I hear about often from many mission residents. So it's exciting. It's, it's happening. So thank you, staff, for making this happen.
Sounds good. Anything else from anyone? All right, Mr. Carroll, will you please call the roll?
Kring.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Reherd.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Schmid.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Loudon. All right, we will now move into unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business tonight, therefore we will move on to new business. And we do have two items of new business this evening. The first item of new business is a resolution for approval of additional funds for a vehicle purchase for the Public Works Department. Ms. Boyce, can you please provide a report about this item?
Sure. In January 2022, the City Council approved the purchase of a 2023 Peterbilt 548 chassis to replace Unit 574, which is an aging 2010 International Dump Truck. The price we were quoted was $112,353. After we ordered the truck, Peterbilt discontinued production, production of that chassis that was originally ordered. And in addition to that and supply chain issues, the manufacturing of the trucks were delayed. So as a result, we're now getting a 2025 model, and the city has been advised that the change accompanied by the delays has resulted in an increase of a cost of $14,472. That brings the total cost from $112 and change to $127,000, $127,95. The new chassis is at the dealership. It's ready to be delivered for the installation of the necessary equipment, which has already been procured, ordered, and is being stored at American Equipment. Staff and the city administrator have expressed to the dealership our concern that the price increase wasn't communicated sooner. But we also recognize that there's no real alternative to the city at this time. If we refuse to accept the truck, then we'll have to wait an additional timeframe. That could be six to nine months, if not longer. And we can also expect a higher price substantially more than the $14,000 of this increase, which has been presented to us. Given the circumstances, staff recommends approving an increase of $14,742 in order to take possession of the new chassis and proceed with the replacement of Unit 574. This adjustment in the budget is necessary to ensure timely completion of the procurement process and adhere to the need for a functional replacement for the aging dump truck. Upon delivery, Unit 574 would be declared surplus and sold.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
First, we'll open it up if there are any member of the public who would like to comment on this item. Seeing none, we will now open up to council discussion. I think I saw Councilmember Krings' hand first.
I agree with the city administrator and staff. I think that put us in a precarious position. I don't appreciate it, and I think we should have negotiated with them and told them our future business may be premised on this, this particular purchase. Did we even, once we said we were disappointed, what was their response?
I can, because I asked to be part of the meeting with the, with the dealer. In, in kind of going back and researching, you know, our staff has always been very good about researching the alternative when they purchased. And I believe Brent will, or, or will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the, we looked at a Kenworth and a Mack and the Peterbilt. And the Kenworth and the Mack vehicles at the time in 2022, when we moved forward with that purchase, were in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $40,000 more than the Peterbilt. So that, I think that still holds true. And because of supply chain issues and demand, the dealer could likely, if we refused to take, you know, to accept the chassis and pay the additional funds, they could turn around and mark that up, and, and we would be right back out. And a new Peterbilt is going to be this much more or higher, as Ms. Boyce mentioned. So, you know, I think we will have to, we very clearly communicated that, you know, basically being advised of the price increase when they said they were ready to deliver it and would like for us to hand them a check in return, didn't give us really any time to react or respond or evaluate those alternatives, but.
Could we possibly have negotiated with them to reduce the sales price, sales tax price on the model that we were going to buy?
We went back and tried a variety of things. We got the factory invoice. We, we looked at and asked them to consider taking off a variety of other prices. And some, they, they did not take any markup or commission themselves on that, on the vehicle, so.
Thanks. I appreciate you looking into it.
Any other comments from council?
Council, are you ready for the motion?
I would, yes, thank you. I would now entertain a motion to approve an increase in the cost of one 2025 single axle dump truck in an amount not to exceed $14,742.
Council President, I move the City Council approve the increase in cost of one 2025 single axle dump truck in an amount not to exceed $14,742.
All right, thank you. It has been.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Carroll, please call the roll.
Thomas.
Yes.
Loudon.
Yes.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Reherd. Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Hesitantly, yes.
Schmid. Motion carries.
All right, our second item of new business tonight is for consideration of updated guidelines for the 2024 Community Rebate Program. Mr. Scott, can you please provide a report about this item?
Hey. Almost the past 20 years, the city has offered a community rebate program to its residents. The rebate program has historically offered a 100% rebate on city property taxes and utility franchise fees, and a 50% rebate on the city's solid waste utility fee for mission residents that own their home and have an annual income below 50% of the area median income for the Kansas City metro area. We have typically budgeted $15,000 a year for this program for the past several years. And we have about an average of 25 households that utilize the program each year. And we rebate back approximately, on average, about $500 to $600 a year to each of those households. So. With the budget process last year, the city council actually increased the amount of that program to $25,000 and asked the staff to evaluate opportunities where we could expand that program, kind of promote it further to our residents, and try to cast a broader net of applicants for the program. In doing that, Neil Afonska is our Community Development Coordinator, the one that kind of coordinates this grant program along with some others, had gathered together some information from other communities in Johnson County that have similar programs to ours. And there's kind of a variety of thresholds. Some have a threshold of 50% of the AMI, like we do. Others, Marion, for example,'s high is 80%. Prairie Village is 65%, Johnson County's 50%. So, kind of looking at that, obviously, we want to promote it more. But then the question is, how do you attract more residents to the program? And our thought process was really to kind of raise that threshold. So it seems a little bit counterintuitive, but when you lower the threshold, make that number smaller, you're actually offering it to fewer families that are really in need. By increasing to the 60 or even 80%, you're offering to a broader base of families that may not quite be at the area median income, but a little bit low. They're kind of struggling to make ends meet. So our thought, that was our thought process. So we, I kind of landed on 65% as an option to increase the area median, or the threshold for our program. It would still be 100% of the city property, and so I'll explain that a little bit. It's not the entire property tax bill, but it's only the city's portion. So you'll, you'll know that when you get your tax bill, there are several jurisdictions that are taxing, from the school district, the fire district, the county, as well as the city. We're only offering 100% rebate on the city's portion of that entire tax bill. And then we'd still be offering 100% of the franchise of utilities, and then 50% of the solid waste. And then we also considered offering 50% of the stormwater utility fee. So that would be an additional opportunity for some funds to come back to families that are in need. And then just in terms of general promotion of the program, if you will, we have had articles in the Mission Magazine. We've obviously promoted that on our website. And we have folks that are aware of the program. It's kind of word of mouth a little bit, the neighborhood. But we're thinking about our Mission Food Pantry, promoting that to the social workers and the schools, and maybe have families that they're aware of that could use a little help. Church bulletins, Meals on Wheels, just kind of finding other avenues to reach out to more targeted audiences. So, so there's thoughts there. So in a nutshell, our recommendation would be to modify the 2024 rebate program to increase the threshold to 65% of the area median income for eligibility, and then to offer the 100% rebate, continue that on the property tax, the city's portion of the property tax, and the city utility fees, or franchise fees, and then 50% on the solid waste fee, 50% on the stormwater utility fee. So with that, I can answer any questions.
All right, any questions first from the public on this item who would like to comment? Seeing none, we will now open it for council discussion. Anyone on council have any questions or comments for Brian on this item? Yes, Councilmember Krings.
I do want to see the stormwater element added. So whatever we do, I want to make sure, because that's one of the highest ones on the, on the bill.
Yeah. All right, and you've got a conversation.
I really like the idea of, of targeting this with, for the people, Meals on Wheels and social workers. I think that that's a really good way of getting it straight to the people who could probably use this the most.
All right, further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Thomas?
Just a question, and this might be a dumb question. That's okay. Do we find that most of the applicants live in the homes that they're seeking really?
That's a requirement.
That's a requirement.
That's a real and occupied home.
Okay, okay. I mean, again, I would assume even if it was an investment property, you probably wouldn't fall, but just curious.
Should have mentioned, seems kind of obvious, but I should have mentioned that, yes.
All right, with no further discussion, Mr. Carroll, please call the roll.
Oh, wait.
That's right. I would now understand a motion to approve an increase in the income threshold guidelines for the 2024 Community Rebate Program from 50% of HUD's area median income to 65% of AMI and/or include a rebate of 50% of the annual stormwater utility fee.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve an increase in the income threshold guidelines for the 2024 Community Rebate Program from 50% of HUD's area median income, AMI, to 65% of AMI and include a rebate of 50% of the annual stormwater utility fee.
Second.
All right, now that it has been moved and seconded, without further discussion, we will go to the aforementioned role.
Schmid.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Reherd.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I will have Neil update the form tomorrow morning, and we'll get rolling our promotion. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Brian. All right, we will now move into our comments from the City Council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share? Councilmember Carpenter Davis.
I just want to really thank Stephanie and Brent and Penn. We've, Brian and I had the opportunity to go see the Public Works Department and understand more, and also the Powell Center, and, and just all the great work you and your staff do. It's just incredible. And just Laura, thank you for, you know, bearing with me as I'm, you know, stepping into this role and providing great overview and, and helping with some of the projects that I think we're going to really enjoy seeing come to fruition this, this year. So thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Parker.
We have a couple of visitors here from the Mission Project tonight, and I just wanted to welcome them. Guys, if you're comfortable waving, so everyone can recognize you. Hello. It sounds like we're going to have some more regular attendance from folks from the Mission Project more regularly, and we're just excited.
It sounds like we're going to have some more regular attendance from folks from the Mission project more regularly, and we're just excited to have you. So thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Yes, Councilmember Cream.
Just want to mention that last week, the mayor, Councilmember Loudon, and I attended the Congress of Cities. The significance of this year was it is now the 100th year of the National League of Cities, which was created and formed in Lawrence, Kansas. Lawrence, Kansas held a reception for all the leadership, the national leadership cadre, and they all came and did a presentation. It was awesome. I went and it was at KU and it was just amazing. Last week, we were in Washington DC attending the Congress of Cities and head representatives from all over the country. Keynote speakers were President Biden, Department of Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg, and Doris Kearns Goodwin, who is a presidential amazing woman, has done all the presidential history of several. She enacted the verbiage and put together the language and the verbiage for the Civil Rights Act. She created the book that the movie Lincoln was based on. It was really phenomenal. And I just want to mention that the city of Mission is highlighted everywhere we go. It doesn't matter if you're in the perimeter of the Kansas City area or west or the east coast. Somebody always recognizes Mission. The small two and a half square mile area gets so much positive recognition because of what the staff does for us and how we represent the positive things going on in this community. We won what's called the Infrastructure Hub Award, and I will let Laura go on about that, but the city was recognized.
I didn't know we won that, so I do, please go, please go on, Councilmember Cream.
It was awesome. We got to go on the stage in front of 700 people, and it was just, there was like three other cities that got something comparable, but nothing on this small scale of the two and a half square miles that we occupy. So it was a wonderful conference. And you guys are to be commended for having the community that you do. It's it's an amazing adventure, and we thank you for letting us go, right, Leah?
Well, and I would just like to add that our own Mayor Flora was part of a panel discussion on the national level, and it was just so amazing to see Mission, you know, represented on the national level.
That's really exciting. Any other comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Schmidt.
Going to piggyback off of Cheryl's comment from earlier. So yeah, I got the opportunity as a new council member to do some tours of the community center and the Public Works facility. What I wanted to call out is I was struck by how much we had taken in to do in-house, and I think that's very counterintuitive in a lot of ways. We live in a world where a lot of things get outsourced because the belief is that it is cheaper. And so I really wanted to applaud staff for really thinking through instances where, no, it really does make sense to bring this in, and it improves overall quality and it improves on costs as well. So that type of, I think of, just really investigative thinking is is great to see here.
Yes, Councilmember Loud.
I just just wanted to, it's the worst part's over, I think, but I just wanted to kind of say that life on Woods and an Outlook between 50th and 53rd have has been challenging. Having two different projects going on at the same time, I probably put a few more miles on my car trying to figure out how to get home from time to time. So just kind of, you know, when we've got projects that are that close together and I know coordinating is hard, and I did find my way home. So it's all good, but, you know, just maybe a little little bit more coordination at that. But we're happy to have both projects going on, so I'm not complaining at all.
Councilmember Cream.
Just quickly, I had an opportunity this afternoon to work with some kids at Tyler's House, which is located on Johnson Drive, right next to the theater. And it's a wonderful opportunity for young people who are in junior high and high school to come in, and they can sit and do their homework. They can converse and talk about things that have happened to them in life. It's a wonderful nonprofit that's that sits in the city of Mission. And they had questions about how to do a resume and critiquing and things like that. So that's a great opportunity. I highly encourage you to go by there sometime. They have snacks available and people to talk to, and it's a great opportunity, and it sits in the great city of Mission.
All right, we will now move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay abreast of with the various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees. First will be the Sustainability Commission with Councilmember Loudon and myself. Do you want to go first, Leo?
I don't really have much more to say. We had such a great presentation earlier, but feel free.
Yeah, I got to attend my first meeting earlier this month, having not been able to make the February meeting, and I found it to be a really engaging and informative session, you know, really just learning how the group operates. The the passion is quite obvious as we've talked to, you know, there was a time when there were, you know, they had raised the issue of seeking volunteers to go to a PRT meeting, and immediately three people raised their hand, you know, out of a 13-person meeting. So that was just really cool to see. And yeah, with with Lauren, you know, we'll be talking more about onboarding and ideas and bouncing off some some things. So I look forward to giving a more in-depth update, perhaps next month or after I'm able to meet with Lauren. Okay. So that concludes the Sustainability Commission. Now we'll hear an update from Councilmember Reherd on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
You want to go PRT or me first? Well, yeah, sorry. It's like, anyways, okay. Yeah, so I've gotten the opportunity to sit down on two Mission Magazine meetings, and it has been a joy and a pleasure. It feels fun and exciting to be back in like a journalistic setting again. So yeah, I remind me, Laura, I think the next issue hits next week, correct?
Yes, should be hitting homes.
Great. Yeah, so I'm excited to see that one come out. I also never want to like spoil too many stories.
Oh, it's fine. This issue, we were theming again this year, and our first issue is themed around youth.
Yeah.
So.
So it's a really, yeah, we had the chance to kind of look through it at last meeting, and it's, it looks really great, and we've been brainstorming on kind of what the next themes for the next couple of issues are going to look like. Possibly doing something on like what makes Mission unique. And then I think something near and dear to all of our hearts, different food around Mission will be the next one, possibly focusing on kind of like how diverse and like culture and food Mission has. So it's been really great. It's a great, like, rambunctious group. So excited to be there, yeah.
And now you can share with PRT as well.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm off. Sorry, I got confused because it's sustainability.
Okay, so we will switch to Councilmembers Cream and Schmidt for PRT.
We had a couple of routine but important things that happened in the last mission, last meeting. Approval of the budget for the year occurred, as well as passing of the overall tree plan, which is great. One thing I did want to call out is that we were, again, officially accepted as a Tree City USA for the year. But also wanted to note that we achieved the Growth Award standing for the third year running. For those who are maybe not familiar, that puts us in the top 15% of all the Tree City USA programs in the country, which just reflects the amount of educational material we put out there, programming available. And how much do we spend on actually maintaining and developing the tree canopy? So when we see presentations like earlier where we're talking about planting all those trees to provide shade, you know, up and down the parks, that's part of what contributes to earning that award and that recognition.
We also talked about what kind of trees to plant and what kind not to plant. And every every single committee says something about the magazine. Well, we want to get this in the magazine, so heads up. Just some general guidance on on tree preservation and what to plant and how to plant, and if you see a dead tree, call Penn and all those kind of things. What a great group this is. Every group we have, it just gets better and better. So I thank you for letting us come on and and listen to all the the things going on and weigh in on, you know, what council can do to support you further. So it was a great meeting.
And then finally, we have Councilmember Carpenter Davis with the Family Adoption Committee.
Yeah, the committee hasn't met, but we're gathering some data and some information so we can share it with the council eventually, since this program has been around a long time, and we've impacted so many families, we want to share that. So look forward to that in months to come.
All right, sounds great. We'll now move into the mayor's report. We did not have a mayor's report this evening, although I will say tomorrow we have a ribbon cutting at 4:30 at Azura Credit Union. Hope to see you all there. But Ms. Smith, do you have any items you would like to share with the City Council tonight?
First, I will channel Ms. Folks, who is at City Clerks Training in Manhattan. We do have a couple of new businesses that are now open in Mission. Deluxe Studios at 5817 Johnson Drive, and then Foe and My Bestie at 6102 Johnson Drive. And then we have two that are coming soon. Avalutos is reopening here in Mission at 6846 Johnson Drive. Many are excited about that sometime later this spring, and then Chakra Circus, which is a collaboration between Mike Coghlan of Script Pro, as I understand it, and Sumaya, don't know Sumaya's last name, that runs the Learn to Fly and has the Sunflower Gyrotonic Studio down on Johnson Drive. So 5800 Outlook, opening the summer of 2024. So we're learning more about that piece. Also, please upload it to your packet earlier today. My heart has been happy this last couple of weeks because our Budget and Finance Manager Christine Corruth and Justin have worked to revive the interim financial report, which languished in 2023 with the staff turnovers. So kudos to them. That information is there. We'll be able to bring those back and start sharing kind of monthly updates with you all about the status. So far, trending looks good in the first couple of months of the year. And then late in the day, you should have received an email from me with a really large document, which is our year-end project status update. There's a lot of information in there. And I won't, I won't go through that. We'll upload that to the packet. We'll also feature it. We have the last couple of years on the website. But when you think about the amount of change and transition that we experienced as an organization in 2023, we turned over about 20% of our employee and our staff, it's pretty phenomenal to read through the list. And I'm sure there are things that we left off the list that are important to you that you would like to make sure we recognize, so that list can be modified if you, once you had a chance to kind of review that. And we will use that to kind of also help inform our budget conversations, which I would like to remind everybody that we do have kind of a work session, goal-setting session next Wednesday. I don't know if there's the opportunity. We will be happy to feed everyone. So let's plan on dinner. I don't know if we could start. Is 5:30 too early for anyone? No? Okay, why don't we plan to start at 5:30? We may meet here. I may chat with Penn and see if there's some space at the community center, but we'll let you know. Really just kind of our opportunity as we move into the budget process for 2025 to review kind of the five key performance areas that we've developed and focused on over the last five years. Some of the goals and objectives in the current year budget. Some of the things on the horizon, obviously beginning to start to talk about, you know, there are a lot of things coming. We heard the Rock Creek Corridor study tonight. There are a lot of things that there's, we have a lot of energy and excitement around that we'll want to think about how we start to incorporate. So we will start that conversation next week. They shared a budget calendar and schedule last, at the end of last week, so if you will, please kind of note those dates. I would appreciate it. We will likely, it looks like we're going to start with our capital improvement program in April and then move into the General Fund in May with the goal of getting our budget wrapped up by August this year. Our meeting dates fall such that we don't have to hold any special meetings, so that will be nice. And I think that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. The next item is executive session. We do not have the need for an executive session this evening, so we will move into adjournment. But before we adjourn tonight, I do want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, so we're moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Good job.